Number.
Okay, we're ready?
Fifteen.
Call to order of the meeting of the Finance Committee. Lee, could you close our doors there? Thank everybody for being here tonight. This is a special meeting of the Finance Committee. We do have in attendance tonight the entire City Council is up here as well as the mayor, and we're here tonight to listen to what you, as the citizens, have on any questions or concerns you may have on the budget. In just a minute, we're going to have a brief presentation on the budget, and then I will allow anyone who has signed up to speak for three minutes. Please be cognizant of the time. There is a timer up there, and if everybody just takes there a lot of time, we'll have time to get through everyone. At the end, if you did not sign up but would still like to speak, I will allow anyone in the room that would like to speak to do so. When the time comes, if you please give your name and address for the record. The reason we ask for that, oftentimes people will ask for information or a question. We need to know how to get ahold of you so we can communicate back with you. We're not going to put you on a mailing list, and you get all sorts of unsolicited mail. It's simply a way for us to find you if we need to. With that, I would like to now introduce Mr. Scott Tesh, who is our Budget Director, who's going to give a brief presentation on the budget for this year.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Clark, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the City Council. We do have a very short budget presentation, taken from some of the information that was provided on Tuesday on the city's overall budget, so I will get through this so that we can open the public hearing. The total proposed budget for this year is actually down from last year. You can see that the operations component of the budget has increased. Debt service has increased slightly, but the major drop is in capital, as we have discussed. That was a result of the $55 million LOBS package, or limited obligation bonds, that was in the FY '23 budget. So the total decrease is roughly 22 million, but you can see almost 60 million has decreased in capital budgets, again, because of that limited obligation bond package. We do have compensation increases in the budget, as well as supplies and services related to inflationary pressures. There are no net new positions, so no additional authorized positions in the budget. We do have a reduction of 50 police officer positions that are vacant, so no filled positions. But again, we are using the reduction of 50 vacant police officer positions to help pay for police pay plan increases. Total budget at $605.7 million, the vast majority of that in environmental health and public safety. As we have discussed, environmental health includes the city-county water and sewer program, which is a large portion of that, and public safety includes police fire and emergency management. On the resources side, roughly a third is covered by property taxes, the other by charges for services. We've talked about charges for services. A lot of those are also related to the city-county water and sewer fund, and then we see sales taxes making up about 12% and down from there. Of note, major tax and fee changes this year, a 2.5 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value increase in the overall property tax rate dedicated to the general fund. It's a 3.9% increase in the rate. The city-county utilities commission recommended a 7% increase in water and sewer fees, and this budget, proposed budget, also includes an 8% increase in stormwater fees effective in January, and those fees have not been increased in 15 years. A quick look at the city and county, or excuse me, city taxes and fees comparison. So we take property taxes along with water and sewer, stormwater, and other selected fees, mostly motor vehicle privileged tasks and solid waste. You can see, using a median home value in those cities, that we rank nearer the bottom, above Charlotte, closer to Greensboro, but well short of the cost in Durham and Raleigh for total taxes and fees as measured here. Just a quick note that after this meeting, there are a couple of other opportunities for the public as well. The Finance Committee will hold another budget workshop next Thursday on the eighth at four o'clock here in council chambers, and then budget adoption is scheduled for June the 20th. There is a public hearing that night as well, and then also the regular Finance Committee meeting on the 13th. If that is needed, we will have budget information presented there as well. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, sir. I'll go down the list, and my ability to pronounce your name is directly proportional to your ability to write distinctly, so I will do the best I can. We will start with Rob Davis.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Chair, and members of the City Council. I'm Rob Davis, Executive Director of the River Run International Film Festival, and my address is 181 East Sixth Street, Winston-Salem, 27101. First of all, thank you for the time you've allotted to me this evening, and thank you for the past support of our festival. Your support did enable us to continue operations through the pandemic in an uninterrupted manner, and we are very grateful for that. I wanted to give you a quick update on the festival that just concluded a few weeks ago. That was our 25th River Run International Film Festival. Now, last year, our attendance was 50% of what it had been in 2019, and this year, I'm so happy that we had that number climb to 64%. So again, we're still in a building block or stepping stone mode, but we're certainly going in the right direction. Total attendance this year was 11,562. During the festival, we provided 13 free screenings and panels. That does not include our free films with class school screenings. This year, we had 1,690 students, K through 12, to participate in those films, and used to, we would do films with class for three or four days, and this year, we had to expand to five days to accommodate the increased demand. We also had 978 virtual tickets sold this year, and those were sold in 35 states plus the District of Columbia. And what's interesting about that is while some of these people are former residents of Winston-Salem, some are folks who live here and have mobility issues and aren't able to get out anymore, others are filmmakers who've worked on a film but can't be with us. But we had some attendance this year by people from out of state who watched a virtual film last year. So we see how this is a marketing tool, really, for both the festival and the city. Speaking of visitors this year, we had 130 visiting filmmakers and special guests who stayed in hotels, visited our restaurants, retail establishments, et cetera. And in closing, I'll just say that in addition to the festival, we have done 11 year-round screenings this year since July 1st, the beginning of our fiscal year, and 10 of those we were able to make free to the community. All of this is due in no small part to the support from the city. We thank you for your past support, and we thank you very much for considering us in your budget this year.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Donna Bell?
Hello, I'm Donna Bell from Child Care Resource Center, Outreach Coordinator, 500 West Fourth Street, Winston-Salem, North Carolina. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Adams, and City Council members, thank you for your support of our organization and for including our requests for continued funding in the 2023-24 budget. The funds you have allocated to us will continue to help us educating families and the importance of choosing childcare to ensure that their children are prepared for school. As we are out in the community, telling people about the work we do, we sometimes meet families who have used our services, but many more times, we meet families who wished they had known about us and used our services while looking for childcare. Working with over 2,000 families in our community each year, we don't always see the impact of our work. Sometimes, it's hard for people to really understand what we do. This year, at our annual luncheon, we had a previous customer talk about our services and the impact on her family life. The parent who spoke was Lieutenant April Rothrock of the Winston-Salem Fire Department. She talked about her struggle that she and her wife had finding childcare for their infant daughter. They knew to get on waiting lists before the baby was born. However, all of the places that they applied to had no spaces. Once the child was here and they needed care, one of her coworkers suggested she call us. Our parent specialists were able to talk with her and conduct a search of childcare programs that might meet her family's needs. Luckily, we were able to help her find care. Tragedy averted. Both parents were able to continue to work with no disruption. Our organization has provided services like this to our community for over 30 years. Our staff of childcare experts have provided services to help families find care by providing information about options from our database with over 375 regulated childcare programs and 419 exempt childcare providers that we maintain on an annual basis. We offer a variety of services to improve the entire childcare ecosystem. We provide play and learn groups for families of young, with young children who might not be enrolled in former care, formal care, excuse me, and to enrich their early learning opportunities. We provide coaching and mentoring to help improve the educational environments and interactions with children. In programs, we offer training and workshops to support the educational development of childcare providers. We want to thank you again for all your support.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Thank you.
Terry Taylor?
Hello, my name is Terry Taylor. I'm the President and Chief Operating Officer at Old Salem Museums and Gardens, Mayor Clark, Mayor Joins, and Chairman Clark, and Mayor Pro Tem. I made you the mayor. And fellow council members, I don't have anything written or prepared remarks, but I'm just here to deeply thank you for the support that you give Old Salem over the past years and this past year, and in this current budget, too. We are rebounding nicely from COVID. Our numbers are up. I was just looking at visitation numbers today, and we're at about 52% at this point in the year as of what we were in 2019, the last year that we were fully open with COVID. We're still struggling somewhat with getting the schoolchildren to come back. So far this past year, we served about 9,000 schoolchildren visiting Old Salem to get a history lesson and a math lesson and a science lesson. Numbers in 2019 were around 20,000 for that same time period. So still struggling a little bit with that, but we hope that those numbers are going to rebound by the end of the year. But we bring thousands and thousands of visitors to Old Salem and to the city to see the restoration, the beautiful city that we have, and they spend time in our hotels, our restaurants, and we feel that we're a vital part of the tourism in the city, and I'm just here to say thank you for all your support and everything that you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Julia Toon? Or Toonee? Toon. What do you even call her?
That's all right. Pretty good. Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Members and Staff. My name is Julia Toon. I live at 623 Summit Street, Winston, 27101, and I am the Chair of the Board of Directors for City With Dwellings. We offer a community of care where people can move with dignity from trauma and homelessness to healing and housing stability. Right now, 254 people are living on the streets in Winston-Salem, in places not fit for human habitations such as cars, encampments, and abandoned buildings. Our vulnerable neighbors are often extremely poor, mentally, medically fragile, with severe mental illness and/or addiction issues, and nonexistent family support. City With Dwellings is the primary resource for the unsheltered or street homeless community in Winston-Salem, providing street outreach, emergency shelter, next-step resource navigation, and peer-based supportive services. The city has been a valued partner since first taking a chance on us in 2019 and granting us community agency funding for street outreach. This support, along with subsequent ESG, COVID, and CDBG funding, has enabled us to meet people where they are, prevent homelessness, and provide transportation, vital document and housing assistance, as well as connect people to food, shelter, healthcare, and other life-saving services. We are especially grateful for the help of Sharika Floyd in community development. She is deeply committed to working with us and other members of the continuum of care to end homelessness in our city. We also value our partnerships with community groups like Atrium's Deke Clinic, Disabilities Advocates, Financial Pathways, Coordinated Intake, and many others. They help us ensure that our guests overcome as many barriers as possible on their way toward better lives. It really does take all of us working together to make a difference. Nationally, unsheltered homelessness is on the rise, and our community is sadly not immune. Every day, we discover more individuals and families living on the streets. With the expiration of COVID funding and the scarcity of safe, affordable housing, it is even more critical that our life-saving work continue, and that is why we were particularly dismayed to learn that our recommended funding level for fiscal year 2024 is nearly 15% lower than this year's. When we walk alongside people to support them and build on what's strong in them, we can create a trauma-resilient community where everyone has the opportunity to live lives of purpose with safety, belonging, and dignity. We continue to explore not just crisis response, but also long-term solutions to provide housing to those we serve. We hope you will continue to partner with us in increasingly significant ways in this critical mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Toon. Scott Cumby?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Chairman, and Council Members. My name is Scott Cumby. I'm here representing the Wells Center at 100 Sprague Street. My address is 402 Overlook Trail. I'm currently Chairman of the Board of the Wells Center, and I wanted primarily to thank you for your support for the past three years, for the work that we're doing. And I wanted to share briefly our successes. So in 2015, Peggy Wells, the founder of the Wells Center, opened the Wells Center, and she's been working with women in prison, coming out of prison, for over 20 years now. She started in Charlotte and moved up to Winston-Salem, finished her education, and again, opened the Wells Center in 2015. Since 2015, she's been working in the Forsyth County Jail as a chaplain and has worked with men and women, but her focus has been on women, and not just working with them in prison, but working with them to help transition them out of prison, back into the community. The goal of the Wells Center is to help these women transition instead of watching them leave the prison system and the jail system and fending for themselves. Peggy has focused on helping these women really transition back into society. So her focus is on trauma healing as opposed to just substance abuse, which most of the programs that are available for women in prison deal mostly with substance abuse. Peggy's program, the Wells Center program, is focused on trauma healing, dealing with those issues that got women into the habits and the cycle that they're in today, and breaking that cycle and helping them again transition back to society. Since 2015, over 600 women have gone through the program with about a 10% recidivism rate, so there's been a great success with that. In the program, when a woman leaves the jail, if we have room, there's a house that we've opened early last year, houses up to five women. If there's room for her, she can stay there up to two years, because again, the focus is really to help the woman transition. It's not a halfway house. It's not just a temporary place. But in the home, we deal with the trauma. We deal with rebuilding family, relationships, education, and training and jobs. So I'm here today, really, first of all, to thank you for your support. It is very important. All the money that has been provided to us through grants, donors, and the city of Winston-Salem, all goes into the program. None of the money goes to paying salaries, so it goes directly to helping these women. And I want to thank you for your support, first of all. I'd like to invite you to come to the house and see the work that we're doing and see the successes. And I also wanted to appeal. We'd asked for an additional $2,500. I just wanted to appeal for consideration for that extra funding. So again, thank you for listening to me tonight. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cumby. Doug Simmons?
Good evening, Chairman Clark, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Adams, and City Council.
Good evening.
Doug Simmons, I'm President of the Winston-Salem Professional Firefighters Association. I live at 2610 Greencash Drive, 27106. After review on the proposed budget, we have some serious concerns regarding public safety pay. While the hard work that this council, budget, and City Manager's Office have done over the last few years to make public safety pay competitive is greatly appreciated, we are in a climate now where we have to do more. You all recognize that with what is being proposed for police, but fire is also headed in that direction. On paper, it appears like we only have 21 open positions. The statistic does not take into account the 18 persons currently in recruit school, employees on extended medical leave or parental leave. On average, the fire department has to fill a minimum of 10 positions with people on overtime every single day, meaning in addition to one's regular 24-hour shift, they are working an additional 24-hour shift to overtime, keeping them away from their families for a total of 48 hours. Working extended hours like this, working, excuse me, working extended hours like this, overtime has proven to have negative effects on firefighter physical and mental health. Our department is approximately half the size of police, so even though our vacancy rate is lower, it is more impactful. We have to address starting pay and compression in the fire department, just as you're doing for police. Firefighter starting pay is around $37,000 a year. Greensboro has just recently raised their starting pay to almost $48,000 a year. That's a $10,000 a year difference, not to mention the number of other, some smaller departments that are doing the same. We will have employees leaving for opportunities in these other cities because pay is so drastically different. To put it in perspective, a firefighter with roughly six to 10 years in our department could take a position in Greensboro and make approximately $10,000 more after their first year. We can't compete with these other departments when it comes to recruiting individuals to replace these vacancies, and we will end up like police, having a greater percentage of vacancies that we can't fill. We have a great fire department, and we cannot afford to lose any of the men and women currently working here, and surely don't want to lose them over pay. Please consider taking a proactive stance on firefighter starting pay and compression so we don't end up in the boat, in the same boat as police officers in the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Sophia Russell?
Good afternoon, Mayor Joins, Mayor Pro Tem Adams, Council Members. My name is Sophia Russell. I'm the Executive Director for Positive Wellness Alliance. My address, home address, is 4765 Leprechaun Lane here in Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27127. One in eight, one in eight persons are living throughout the United States, as well as here in North Carolina, undiagnosed with HIV. So the work that we do at Positive Wellness Alliance is very important, and I'd like to first say thank you very much for supporting that work as the work that we do around housing. So the funding was for HOPWA, which is Housing Opportunities for Persons Living with AIDS, as well as for our rapid rehousing position. I want to note the rapid rehousing position. I didn't see that one funded, and I want to share why that's important. You heard the response from the board member that shared that almost 234 people are living unhoused. Well, if those one in eight out of that total, that means that there are roughly 32 people that are living with HIV that are on the streets of our cities, and that means that the work that our rapid rehousing, housing case manager does is very, very important. That role is very fluid. They get an opportunity to go out into the city and make communications and contacts with persons that are living in our tents, under the bridges, and places like that to ensure that they are connected to medical care, as well as tested. We work with testing groups here in the city to make sure that persons that do not know that they are HIV positive do know that they are, and then we connect them, link them to care that they need. And so I wanted to share that with you all as you consider the budget to also consider the rapid rehousing position for our agency, because that is very, very important. The person now handles a caseload of 28 people, which is an increase since the role has been in position, since you funded the position back in 2017. And so I'd just like to thank you so very much for considering funding that position, as well as funding our HOPWA services that we provide to persons. Through those funds, we are able to provide food services through our food pantry and things in the like manner. So I just wanted to, again, mention that one in eight piece because the work that Positive Wellness Alliance is doing is very, very important. And the CDC reported that there is a 12% decrease of the persons that are newly diagnosed with HIV. But here in our county, Forsyth County, to be exact, we have 1,786 persons that are living with HIV, and of that, we still have the one in eight persons that do not know. So thank you all for your support, and thank you for the funding.
Thank you. Harold Sims or Smith? I'm not sure what the last name is.
To Mr., to our dear mayor and members of the council of the city of Winston-Salem, my name is Harold Smith. I'm here representing Eureka Ministry, and I am the president of that nonprofit. On behalf of our Board of Directors, we want to let you know how much we appreciate all of your help. We help the ex-offenders in our community to obtain and maintain permanent housing. Some, we help with food, past due rent, utility bills, and so many things that we can, we help them with to keep them off the street. So we could not do that unless you help us, and we want to say thank you for that. And by the way, I live at 3579 Sand Collins Road, Winston-Salem. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Willard Bass?
Good evening, Chairman Clark, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council Members. 20 years ago this year, IDR was established in this community. The following year, 2004, the city wrote a resolution acknowledging the work and the need for the work of IDR. So I'm here to tell you all that, thank you all for the work that you have supported. We started out doing a team concept where we were a training institution to become teams. We had six teams in Winston-Salem originally. We had the fire department, no, excuse me, we had the health department, we had the police department, we had the President and Inter Section Dialogue, we had Green Street Church, the Moravian Church, and Winston-Salem Foundation. Those organizations worked for about seven years, and then they began to wane. And it was at that time, then, that we had to make a decision as to how we were going to do this work. We still felt that this work was very important, and so we made a shift. It was, it was told to us that our name, Institute for Disamending Racism, presented a problem for some people. And so we then retooled our name to be the Freedom Tree at IDR. And from there, then, we looked around the community to see what kind of issues we wanted, because we felt like, well, let's do the work ourselves. Let's take the training that we do, Councilman CPO, and let's train. Let's show the community how to do it. And so we looked around the committee, and we found out that food deserts was a big issue. 2017, there was 11 food deserts in Winston-Salem. We and my colleague, Gary Wisdom, decided that we were going to address food. And so we then decided, okay, what are we going to do? How are we going to address food? And so we felt like we wanted to combine the work of IDR then with the work of addressing food, and we came up with the idea of a cooperative. So we established a shared cooperative of Winston-Salem and the Harvest Market, and they opened up one in October this past year. Thanks to you all, your help, that we're now a full-service food store. How many of y'all are members? Look at there. That's what I'm talking about. How many of y'all are members? Y'all gonna join this food store? So, so then we went from there, then, to looking at other issues, and I'm happy to report to you that our latest issue, or the work that we're doing, is called Truth Reconciliation and Reparations, and it involves, again, a resolution that you all made around slavery. We apologize for slavery here in Winston-Salem, but we said, no, we need to go deeper than that. Let's see how we can help then find an action about that. And so we then began to work with the city-county planning process, and what happened was that there was a process called reparative justice. And so we're now doing reparative justice, and we're going to use Happy Heal as our pilot to do reparative justice for the community. We're going to learn from that, right, and we're going to take this model across the community, and we're going to look at some of the issues of devastation, gentrification, all those kinds of things that we still wrestle with here in our town. We believe that if we get to those kind of things, we're going to find out that we're holding heel, and we're going to be a better community. and we're going to be a better community. Amen? Amen. Thank you all for the work and look forward to working with you all. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Bass. Adrian Smith.
Mayor joins, Mayor Pro Tem Adams, Chair Clark and City Council members. My name is Adrian Smith. I live at 916 Granville Drive, Winston-Salem, 27101. And I'm here tonight as a representative of Mixer Maker Space, their board of directors. For those who don't know, Mixer provides access to technology, tools and community so that everybody in Winston-Salem can learn, build and give back. We have a warehouse full of tools, a wood shop, a metal shop, sewing area, a tech lab and much more. Mixer has run a successful STEAM summer program for the past four years. And we recently applied for city funding so that we could expand that program to be year-round. Our request was denied and I'm here tonight to ask this body to reassess that decision. Our STEAM program offers students grades six through 12 a chance to take summer camps like rocketry, fashion design or programming. We've got about 20 camps planned for this summer, including camps directly with Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. We're positioned to be an important part of the cradle-to-career pipeline. As drones, advanced manufacturing and regenerative medicine continue to grow here, we need to expose students early to STEAM subjects as early as we can and as often as we can. Our STEAM program prepares students for career opportunities and for higher ed, including college and technical college programs. Our STEAM program is also an asset for Winston-Salem in providing a safe and accessible space for at-risk youth. As this program grows, we can expose more kids to new career opportunities and keep them safe and off the streets. With your support, we can expand our impact and serve even more families. So thank you for your time. I appreciate your willingness to take a second look at this funding request. Take care.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Sam Matthews.
Good evening Chairman Clark and members of the city council.
Good evening.
I'm Sam Matthews, executive director of the Shepherd Center of Greater Winston-Salem, 1700 Ebert Street, 27103. On behalf of the Shepherd Center and those we are privileged to serve, I want to thank you for your investment in our mission of promoting and supporting successful aging in our community. We are the only state-certified senior center in Forsyth County and actually the city of Winston-Salem. Your investment has paid significant dividends. With your support of our mission, we, you have enabled the Shepherd Center to serve even more older adults than any year in the past. In 2022, we remained open as we did all through COVID and we served a record number of 7,700 older adults through all of our programs and services. 40% of those individuals were below 200% of the federal poverty level. We served over 3,600 individuals and families through the services of our Faith in Action Care Program, providing support for older adults who wish to remain independent in their own homes, which is what everyone wants to do. We responded to a record 15,584 requests for one-way transportation. There are transportation deserts throughout our community and we were able to respond to those and set a record in doing so. We responded to a record 857 minor home repair requests. And we estimate that annually, we're saving $150,000 a year for older adult homeowners through that program. We provide the labor and in many cases, we provide the funds to support the repairs that they need. We provided home visitation and respite care for over 150 individuals and families, offering caring companionship and comfort to older adults, which became increasingly more important during COVID with social isolation. And lastly, we were able to offer 1,900 meaningful health and wellness activities during 2022 for over 3,800 older adults through our Vital Living Senior Center Program. This included Medicare counseling through our seniors' health insurance information program, which is supported by the Department of Insurance at the state level. And that included our attending quarterly retiree programs for the city retirees. So we're very, very thankful for the funding that has allowed us to accomplish this and we completely appreciate all of the support that you give us in our mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Sharice Davenport.
Hello, everybody. Hello Chairman and hey, everybody. I'm just excited to be here today. My name is Sharice Davenport. I'm with the Smiley Sweets Foundation. I live at 1720 Butler Street, Winston-Salem, North Carolina. And I've been working in the community, giving back since 2001. I established a 501(c)(2) in 2003. I lost my daughter, she was 23, to cancer. And so I started the Smiley Sweets Foundation. And what Smiley Sweets stands for is children, existence matters, no child should be left behind, regardless of their environment, because that environment does not define who they are as a person. It's an honor that the Sheriff Department allowed me to use the substation in Piedmont Circle. We have been there since July 27, 2022, working alone with Ms. Frye and others. And since that time, the crime rate has came down tremendously. We have several programs within Smiley Sweets. Our two main focus is health and well-being of each child. It starts with the boutique where I work on self-esteem issues and awareness that can play a big role in these young lives. Then teen talk is about drug prevention, alcohol, sex and social media that a lot of the parents do not sit down and discuss with their children. This is where the teens express their feelings and we give feedback, teaching them that there are other coping options than drugs and social media. Fish for Tish teaches them how to fend for themselves by teaching them how to fish and it's a source of food. Salem Lake sponsors this program once a month from April to September yearly. The Sheriff Department partners with us with the Fish for Tish program. They bring the kids out and also volunteer with us. We feed these children complete meals on a regular basis. Spring break, I fed 60 kids that whole week every day. The partnership with First Christian Church, I'm doing a 12-week cooking class to teach these kids how to cook. They are providing the kitchen and classroom for me. And I'm also partnership with Hope Foundation and New Communion and they're going to help me with the food as well. The biggest issue that I have is transportation. You know, I can go into this community, but taking these kids outside of that environment, that makes them want to do better because you're showing them different. And I also work with the parents. You can work with kids all day, but they going right back into that same environment. So I have to work with those parents as well. So I do the kids, I do the parents and I bring them all together. And this is why Smiley Sweets is standing here before you, because as long as you help us, we can continue to give these free services for these kids because I don't want to charge these parents that can't afford. And no child should be left behind because of what parents cannot do or afford to do. So I don't want no kid to suffer. So as long as I can get funding and sponsorship, I'm going to provide these free services for these kids. And I just want to say thank you for having me. It was an honor to stand before all of you wonderful, important people. I feel like I'm in the White House. But anyway, thank y'all again.
Thank you, Ms. Davenport.
You're welcome.
Eileen Iusso.
Good evening Mayor Pro Tem, Chair and Council Members. I'm Eileen Iusso. I am the executive director of the Shalom Project on whose behalf I'd like to speak a few words this evening. I live at 6166 Spring Forest Drive in Poughtown, North Carolina. Our organization has been providing services to this community since 2000 and has been a nonprofit organization since 2006. The Shalom Project not only provides for basic needs including food, clothing, diapers, toiletries, primary healthcare, lab testing and pharmaceuticals, but we also offer programs that affect the root causes of poverty, specifically poverty, mobility and affordable housing. With a small staff of employees and I always like to say, an army of volunteers, the Shalom Project in 2022 alone provided food and clothing to more than 1,000 households representing 3,000 individuals. Our medical clinic experienced 1,650 patient visits. 225 of those visits were new patients. And we saved our local emergency rooms $2.3 million as a result. We have hosted the mammogram bus, numerous vaccine clinics, distributed $463,000 in free pharmaceuticals. Our Flourish Program worked with seven female heads of household towards achieving financial stability. We saw 100% graduation rate and 50% of those women increased their goals of financial stability. Our Peters Creek Community Initiative received $12 million from the state of North Carolina and additional funding of $2.5 million to build 62 affordable housing units. And all of that money will come back here into the community of Winston-Salem because all of our contractors and builders are based in Winston-Salem. Our organization comes before you today to request funding to support the demand for all of these services and the ongoing growth and expansion of our programs. And to aid our organization because you see we are in, looking for a new home to better serve our community where we can do all our programs in a contiguous space. So I thank you for your consideration of this request and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Whitney Harness.
You got it right. My writing was sloppy, so I apologize for that.
No, you're pretty good.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Whitney Harness and I represent the Delta Arts Center at 2611 New Walker Town Road. After researching the city strategic plan and our proposal, I understand we have some, several similar interests and cultural cohesion is at that forefront of those interests. I'm not sure if you're aware, but the Delta Arts Center is in a period of revitalization. We have planned an ambitious programming schedule for the remainder of this year and into next year. And I'd like to draw your attention just to a couple of simple of those highlights. I'd like you to first come and visit our exhibition that we have right now, Reimagine Legacy: The Art of Lavette Ballard. It's running from now until August 25th. It's free admission. She is a black, strong female artist that represents our whole community. Next in less than two weeks, we're having the Blues Camp where we partner with Winston-Salem State University and Blues Camp International. This is a free camp to any youth that's 12 to 18. It's a week-long camp, all-day camp. We invite and encourage you to stop by and drop in and also encourage participants to register. We're also having a community day, September 9th. It's free to the community to celebrate our community and to celebrate what we have done. It's food trucks, vendors, live music, entertainment. And also we want to let you know that the Delta Arts Center recognizes the importance of youth in our community. We would love to partner and continue to partner with the Best Choice Center Schools, with the Freedom Schools, with the city's park and recreations, doing summer programs with them. And just allow you to know that the Delta Arts Center is here and present and ready to partner. Lastly, before I sit down, I'd like to just consider your renewal of the Arts Council funding. The Arts Council is a major supporter of the Delta Arts Center and our community. And I just ask you to also request their funding. Thank you for your time and opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Danita Mitchell.
Good afternoon, Mayor Joyner, Pro Temple. My name is Danita Mitchell. My address is 1080 Shalamar Drive, where I reside at the YWCA Holly House, where I'm the program director of a women's facility where we serve women who are 18 and over with a diagnosis of substance use disorder. All of our women are in a crisis stage when they come to Holly House. 95% are homeless, 90% are estranged from their families and do not have medical attention. We work with the detention center where we go into the county jail and speak with the ladies about Holly House and a lot of them are referred from the detention center. And we also have women that are referred from Forsyth Hospital, Daymark Recovery Services and other various treatment centers. We other step after treatment. We do offer housing. We offer six to nine-month program. They have substance abuse counselor onsite. We also offer trauma counseling. We work with vocational rehabilitation for employment skills. We also work with a SOAR training. We did have two that has recently graduated and is now in the parts of recreation. We helped them to get back into our community with their children. We also have, like I said, trauma counseling onsite. We, there are 10 support groups. We work with Daymark for their mental health concerns. We have medication management and I can say that the four of us that came through Holly House are now employed by Holly House, that's peer support specialists. We also, after they leave Holly House, they also can do the six-month aftercare program where they can come back for anything, if they need anything. They come to our groups, they can also, if they need other services, we can help them with that. We do have a 90% success rate. However, during the pandemic, it did drop a little bit, but we back up to like 8% to 7%. I can say for the last, over the 10 years, the 45 that came through detention center, only two has returned to incarceration. So we are very pleased, you know, to serve these ladies, to help them to get back into society. And we really appreciate you all supporting us. And we hope that you will support us in the upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ciatt Shabaz. It's C.I.A.T. Shabaz. Oh, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Members of city council and staff. My name is Kiyat Shabaz. Please bear with me. I have a medical challenge to have, due to having metastasized lung cancer. However, that's just a minor challenge because God has been good to me.
I miss.
You see my shirt? That's my shepherd. I continue to do the work for our veterans, community outreach services. We've been in operation for over 17 years. And I'm here tonight to make an appeal to ask for a small increase in our funding. There is massive veterans that utilize our services from the Department of Veterans Affairs to the other agencies, Goodwill, United Way. All of these agencies, and you heard much discussion about housing. Well, we put Band-Aids on problems. Most folks are referred when the veterans approach agencies. If they are veteran, the first person they send them to is us. And we have been known to be for the city of Winston-Salem, one of your key agencies in providing emergency assistance for veterans. And it's not just their claims. And in the last two years, this is how many veterans that I have lost from my membership who are deceased, 33. Not only do our veterans, we do outreach to the veterans. We, I have a veteran, two veterans in the audience now, a female and a retired Army veteran. So I hope that you would consider, we only asked for $10,000. We don't have any paid staff, but I need help. And in order to do that, I need to be able to provide someone with a stipend or something. My father is dead, so I can no longer. My father is dead, so I can no longer get money from my father. I'm almost depleted my inheritance of putting my own money into the organization to make certain that we remain viable and credible. So I'll move away and let the veterans speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Linda Pryor.
That's me.
Go right ahead if you'd like to speak.
Hello. Thank you. I'm a Navy veteran, and I was in crisis two and a half years ago when I moved to North Carolina from Arizona. And I'm not sure who led me to Harry Veterans, but I'm very grateful that they did because my... I was crying on the message that I left. I guess I called after hours or something, but I was just at a moment of very much despair because it was a hard time getting out here. I didn't have any place to stay except for my sister's house, and that was going downhill quick. And so what I needed was, I was in crisis, was that I needed a license to work here in North Carolina as an occupational therapy assistant. So Ms. Kiatt and Harry Veterans jumped right in, helped me out, and got me my license. I've been working ever since in the nursing homes and assisted living places in North Carolina. Been here two and a half years, and I bought a little condo, and so, I know, I just fell in love with Ms. Kiatt and the people at Harry Veterans and the message, the mission of Harry Veterans. And so I commit my time to volunteer. I work a lot, so I can't volunteer as much as I used to, but the mission is, it helps, it works. And people are coming to Harry Vets every day for, you know, food in crisis, just like I was, and just need a little bit of help. And so, thank you for your support, and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We have a retired veteran. He didn't sign in, but if he wants to speak.
Okay, I'll get him in just a second. Okay, next on the list is Rodrick Carter. Good evening.
I'm Rodrick Carter, 136 Scottney Court, Winston-Salem, 27127. And I'm here as a participant of the Winston Lake Golf Course. I'd like to thank you for the 23-24 generous budget to provide the golf carts, and I just have just a couple of questions. At the Winston Lake Golf Course, there's a driving range that's in need of severe repair. It's been under construction for, I don't know, it seems like two years now. There is, it appears, significant dollars left in the 22-23 budget, and my request is, can that or be examined, that those funds be used to complete that course or be provided with the equipment to actually make that driving range better? So, that's my question.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I normally just listen, but I will make a comment. There is $1.7 million allocated to Winston Lake for capital improvements. I don't know what exactly is going to be done with it, but it is allocated. I put a little note here. I'll have the Department Manager of Recreation to give you contact, see if he can fill you in. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Margaret Collins?
Hello, I'm Margaret Collins. I'm the founding executive director of the Center for Creative Economy. Thank you Chairman Clark, Mayor Pro Tem Adams, Mayor Joyce, and members of the City Council. I live at 5212 Cedarwood Creek Drive here in Winston-Salem, and I'm here to thank you for your past support. It has been very meaningful to the Center for Creative Economy and to ask if you would please reinstate the center into the fiscal year '24 budget. We have, we applied for funding for our Velocity Creative Business Accelerator for '24. The city has provided funding for this in the past, for the past five years, and it is really integral to the success of the program. It is a 10-week, very robust curriculum and customized mentorship, and currently, it's the only business accelerator in Winston-Salem. The others have ceased to exist and are no longer operating. So Velocity provides a really important resource for those early-stage entrepreneurs who need training and they want to get a business going, but they really don't know, you know, how to do it. We do, of course, seek funding from outside the city to run this program. The city's support represents about 14% of the Velocity program, but it's an important 14%. We really do need that to keep it going in a robust fashion. We also do provide $20,000 in direct grants this year to companies that are going through the program and that do really well. And we've gotten, now we have some funding from Truist and Wells Fargo to help go along with that, to help make those grants possible. So we're trying to build it each year, and we really appreciate your support. In '22, we did have 70 applications from all over the U.S., and we had, and actually internationally. Those demographics were 31% female and 31% people of color, but 80% of our participants are local, and the program, but I just want you to know, the program attracts attention from all over the country and internationally. And to date, we've helped 80 companies, and 80% of those are still thriving. There is, 61% of all of our past participants are women, and 32% are minorities, and they have raised $14 million in revenue and $21 million in investment. So they're doing really, really well. Velocity is a program that works, and it's very, we're very proud that we are based right here in Winston-Salem. So we ask for your support if you would please consider reinstating the CCE into the community funding budget at the same level as last year. We would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Those are all the folks that are signing up to speak. If you did not sign up but would like to speak, you may come forward and speak. And again, give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Okay, yes. Good evening. My name is Kelly Easton. I am here on behalf of Action for Equity and Winston-Salem Freedom School. Our address is 1922 South Martin Luther King Boulevard. South Martin Luther King Lane Avenue, goodness. So Freedom School is a free, six-week summer program for grades K through 12, designed to increase literacy, social-emotional learning, civic engagement, the love of learning, and self-esteem. Unfortunately, public education is under attack, and with so many competing priorities and needs, it appears that often our children fall at the bottom of the priorities, which is why I'm here today requesting your assistance to help us keep this program going. Children and their families love Freedom Schools. Freedom Schools keep our children safe and in a culturally affirming environment throughout the summer. Each year, we have a long waiting list of children wanting to participate throughout our community and the fun and the excitement and the energy of Freedom Schools. We currently serve 500 scholars, almost all of whom live in communities that are woefully underfunded and under-resourced. The numbers in terms of our success do not lie. Most children, actually 84%, maintain or gain instructional learning, reading levels, without experiencing any summer learning loss. On average, instructional reading levels increase by eight months. More than 95% of parents reported positive changes in their youth. We have heard about the support, the heartfelt support of Freedom School from many of you, which is, and we do not take that lightly. This is the first request that we've made to make that support practical. We hope you will vote to support the many college students, the Winston-Salem Forsyth County educators, the community activists, advocates, and organizers, as well as their children and their families, as we keep the generational love and energy for Freedom School in our city. We hope that you will support this by helping us fill a small gap. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anyone else want to speak tonight?
Julianne Allen, President of Action for Now Incorporated. Just want to start off very quickly by saying, after listening to all the first prior individuals coming up here thanking the city for their support or for actually hoping to give them some support, let me just say, if I didn't know any better, I would have thought that Winston-Salem was a third-world country because person after person relayed the message, "We need this for this, we need this for this," and I'm all for nonprofits receiving money. But when there is no way to measure the outcome of what they're really doing, not all of them, but just some of them, then it tells me very quickly that either we're just throwing money at, you know, just throwing it away, or either we're just putting a Band-Aid on a gunshot wound. That's what it sounds like to me sometimes. And the fact that we know that we can do more when it comes down to leadership, instead of taking all the money, when I look at economic development and all the money that we have given from this city to, you know, individuals, Mr. Bob Leek, Mr. Don Flo, and yes, I do call names, and others, some of the nonprofits that the mayor, Allen Jones, have started and everything. And the fact that we've given millions of dollars, and you all have gone along with it since your tenure here on City Council, that tells me you're not really concerned about the issues within the city. You're just, it's like you're just checking off a box, checking off a box, and we need to help better. We've been advocating for the police, the sanitation workers, and just the city employees, period, ever since 2013, maybe even before then. You know, better pay, better individuals coming before, you know, the better, the more we have as far as what we can do, if we don't start at home first within the City Council itself, and I'm talking about the employees that works for the city, the more restless the lawyers has ever been, both for the fire department, the police department, just all over, oh my goodness, how in the world can we put this out in the city? How can we work and do for the people that you all supposed to represent? We don't. What we do, we sit back, and you all look and listen and talk, and, but you're not effective. That's what the difference is. You're not effective enough to do the job that you all were voted into office to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Julianne. Does anyone else who would like to speak?
My name is Thomas Greenwood. My address is 2190 Indian Trail, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 271062447. I'm a Salem college student, and I'm a member of Harry's, and I just want to let you know that there are many, many homeless veterans in this city, because I used to be one of them. Harry didn't help me to get to where I am today, a homeowner, a landowner, and everything else. My children have no student loans, and they're out of college, but I learned this through other agencies that helped me. And I just ask you to look around the city, please, and understand that the problem is much, much more severe than any of you can imagine. A nation is not judged about how it treats its children or its elderly, believe it or not, but its veterans. So I implore you, please, whatever agencies that have come before you and will come before you, please aid and assist them to give a veteran a home. You have untapped resources in the community, on the street, highly-trained people, or people who can be trained because they are highly motivated. I just ask you, search within yourself. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Does anyone else who would like to be heard?
Good evening. Got me here, sign, 5116 Britt Road. I just wanted to say that the city has pledged to apologize for slavery and start speaking about reparations, and that's maybe all good, but I think if the city would commit truly to the community that's coming before you begging for funds, if you really look at it as far as minority contractors are concerned, and that's one issue I want to speak about tonight, that I don't hear any of you talking about minority contractors. You have a 600-some million-dollar budget, and I really feel, talking to contractors in the city, and most of us agree that if we make up 32% of the population, yet we get 1% and 2% of the contracts, just look at your own disparity studies, and it'll make you want to throw up when you look at what the African-Americans are getting from this pot of money. And I think it would be a form of reparations if you do the right thing with what money you already got, by making sure that the whole community benefits from it, if the whole community is paying taxes. You don't even speak about it. I listen to you on TV, and most times, I'm here in person, starting a topic conversation because you're not going to do anything about it. And if you don't do anything about it, things will only continue as they have been for the last 20 years. And I will say this for our firefighters. They've been discriminated against in this city, yet they gave, they put their life on the line when that Weaver fire was going on. If that thing would have blew up, they'd have been the first ones to lose their life. I got mad respect for them, yet they still came in here and got discriminated against, but they, they did their job. They do their job. So I think they, their pay should be more than what you're offering, but that's just my opinion, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, last one, here we go.
How you doing?
You, sir, you have the...
Last one.
Your last one.
Appreciate that. Did I just hear you say you had $1.7 billion for the golf course at Winston Lake?
Uh-huh. It was budgeted last year.
Okay. Do you know, they don't have one slide...
Yeah, can we get your name and address, please?
Thomas Burton.
Thank you, sir.
1541 Northeast 24th Street. Do you know they don't have one slide for kids in the four shelters at Winston Lake? Everything in Winston Lake is too advanced for the kids about... Y'all remember Evan Rollins? He used to work down here. Could you smile, please? Could you please smile or something? There you go, right there.
You have, you have, please, you speak, we're listening.
Okay, all right. You looking at me like, you know, but anyway, Evan Rollins, I had Evan Rollins come out there and look at the parks. Evan Rollins, he had like three master's degrees or whatever, but he had common sense. That's what I liked about Evan. He looked at these playgrounds and said, "Thomas, they are too advanced for these kids." Who got, who's over, uh, damn, the park, what's that, Rupert Bay? Who got Rupert Bay? Who area does that? What's one of your all of us?
Doesn't matter. It's mine.
That's your area? Rupert Bay is one of the best parks in the city. Rupert Bay don't have nothing for them kids to play on. Last person to done something for Rupert Bay was Chris Paul. He did that basketball court. If you see the stuff Tim Gant put up in that park, I asked Tim, "Why did you put that up there? Man, them kids can't play on that," and it's still there. You ought to go see it. It's sad. But most churches have their church big nicks. You know where they go? Polo, uh, to the white parks. Let me put it that way. None of them have their church fences at Rupert Bay, and that's sad. No, none of them have their church functions at Rupert Bay, and that's sad. The kids need somewhere to play on. Like the lady said, Piedmont Circle, they don't even have a shelter on the playground where the kids play at Piedmont Circle. Kids can't even play on that stuff in Piedmont Circle. They got to hang around the house with their mothers and stuff. When we came up, they ran us out the house. You couldn't hang around grown folks. Today, the kids hang around grown folks all day, every day. The kids need somewhere to play. School is where they get out. You know where they going to be at? They ain't got nowhere to go, the streets. Y'all know this. They need PlayStation 5s or something like that in the recreation centers around here. Put PlayStation 5s in each range for these kids to do. Don't just send them to the streets, because when they get out of school, they ain't got no jobs, you know what I'm saying? They ain't got nothing to do. The mothers ain't working. You get what I'm saying? Y'all putting money on a golf course, put something on them kids, man.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's our time for this evening. Our next meeting is a week from today at 4 o'clock, same room. Thank everybody for being here tonight, and we will stand adjourned. Thank you.